Meeting on Monday, July 10th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room in the Town Hall, 1 Metcalf Square in Winthrop, and it is being televised live. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Leonard, Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry? Ms. Powell?
Yes. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Swope, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment and no delegates or visitors, we would normally be proceeding to minutes, but I'm going to table that vote until we can have a quorum on that from the last meeting. May I have a motion for SVW 23-23 in the amount of $262,306.86?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Littieri, second by Ms. Payne. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to allow the payment of the 2021 and 2022 invoices with funds from the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Mr. Littieri. Any discussion? For the record, I will note that that is a total of $6,921.06. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Ayes have it. We have no subcommittee reports. Do we have a superintendent's report?
We do. It's been a short week because we had the holiday, short two weeks since our last meeting because of the holiday week, which went off very nicely in the community. Matt Caromby and I stay in contact on July 3rd and 4th, just discussing our students, making sure everybody is behaving themselves. I'm happy to report that all went well. Staffing continues to be rigorous and happening on a daily basis, filling in the positions of the folks who left. I read off a number of positions that were filled, and I'll update you at the next meeting with a more complete list of the openings that we had. You may have seen, if you're, if you do as a parent and a school committee member, you may have seen an email. We did some outreach to parents. You know, we have close to 2,000 students, so we did an email outreach to parents, letting them know the positions that we had open. Word of mouth is very helpful. We continue to use Indeed and SchoolSpring and local colleges to recruit staff, along with some systems in the Department of Education that allow us to look at different portals to try to recruit staff to our district. So we've gotten, that went out, I believe, Sunday, so we've gotten some response today, which was excellent, especially with parents who are looking for some part-time work as lunch monitors or recess monitors. We have some part-time secretarial work in the Gorman Fort Banks School. We have one full-time secretary and one assistant, so we were looking for that, and the other various positions. So it was nice to see the parents are paying attention to their emails. We've also started the reestablished residency process. Those letters went out to all families via email through Blackboard Connect to all students who this past school year were in grade two, grade, grade two, grade five, and grade eight. So all of those students are transitioning to new schools. So as they transition to their new schools, we have a policy in place that asks them to reestablish their residency. It's a pretty simple process, and we used to have one person do it on multiple evenings and afternoons, and this year, the secretaries are actually doing it at their building. So that was sent out to families so that they're aware of when they can come to do that process, fulfill that process with the necessary paperwork, and also contact information for the secretaries in the event that they need to make an appointment because the times don't work for them. So we've had a fair amount of response, which is better than years prior. Years prior, we were scrambling, when we would say the last date is August 17th, parents would start scrambling on the 16th, and, you know, then we were chasing ourselves at the last minute. So the goal is to update our systems, make sure that all our students are residents here in the community. It's definitely not being done to aggravate people, but it has to do with the folks here who pay taxes that supplement our school's budget, and making sure all our students do live here. We will also this year, and we have done this in the past, but we'll be sending out a card to all of our families, an index card welcoming them back to school this year with the beginning date of school, just a reminder that school is starting in a couple of weeks. That will go out to all the homes of all the students who are registered here, again, as well as our students that attend the Northeast Regional Vocational School and the students that attend Essex Tech. We do that to welcome them back to a school year, and also, again, it's another checkmark for residency to ensure that people are still living here because people do move. So we're excited to be able to do that. We, let's see. Today was Ms. Pearson's official last day. The staff, administrative staff had a celebration for her last Thursday, and it was, it was nice, it was emotional. I mean, it's been here for quite some time, and it's been, you know, difficult when a chapter in your life is ending and a new chapter for her is beginning, as she's going to be taking care of one of her grandchildren. So I think she's insanely excited about that, but so committed and dedicated to the Winthrop Public Schools that handing over her bullhorn, which we, I think she took that home with her today, was very hard for her. So she spent the day with Mark McInaney, who is the new principal of the Gorman Fort Banks. Mark's going to come to a school committee meeting this summer to introduce himself and say hello and have, give you a few thoughts on his entry plan into the Gorman Fort Banks. So the official transfer of the bullhorn took place today, and we welcome and wish Eileen the best, and we have her phone number, so she's not too far away. And what's pretty amazing is she really put it out there that she is available for Mr. McInaney for anything he needs throughout the school year. If he has questions, or if he wants to run a scenario by her, something from the past that he needs history on, she put herself out there to say that she's more than willing to do that. So we thank her for that because that's extremely helpful. They also, Ms. Pearson and Mr. McInaney had a meeting today with For Kids Only. I was not part of that meeting, but I will follow up on that. For Kids Only is, again, requesting the use of the Gorman Fort, Gorman Fort Banks School for their after-school programming. Details need to be worked out with that, contracts for the use of space if we have it. I need to have Mr. McInaney get a sense of the floor plan. Mind you, he's been in during the whole month of June on several occasions, meeting with various staff members, talking to the custodial staff, looking at the building, looking at what improvements need to be made, just getting a general sense of the overall function of the school. So today's meeting with FKO was informational, to get some information from them as to what they may need for space next year if we have it, and for him to get just a general understanding of the partnership that we have had in the past and hope to continue in the future to support our students with after-school programming. I'm not sure if people have driven behind the Coming School lately. I may have talked about this earlier, and I'll have more detail at the next meeting, but I believe it's the Winthrop Trees Foundation donated trees. So we have a number of new trees planted along the playground, and there's been improvements in that playground. We've had the tar redone, and we've had some borders put in. They've been watering those, those plants, and they have them roped off. Custodial staff has been paying attention to them on the daily to make sure that there's no destruction of property going on out there. We have cameras out there, so hopefully our students and families that utilize the Coming School playground off school hours, hopefully they'll be respectful of the trees. And the trees are designed to obviously help the environment, but also at some point to provide some additional shade for our students while they're outside. So they really look nice. I'll have some more information on that, and we will be getting a thank you note out to them as well. And another important thing, every summer, we do a Leadership Academy where the leadership staff, principals, and the PPS director, Laurie Galvin, who's the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Curriculum, meet with me, and we go through an awful lot of work during the summer to prepare for next school year. The agenda is very thick each time we meet. We try to stay on target and on time, and, and I think it's purposeful that we don't technically put nuts and bolts things during that time, things that can easily be done via email communication amongst us. For instance, the dates of the fire and police inspection. We don't need to spend 25 minutes talking about that. Those are items that we can easily communicate to each other. But the larger items, I'll just give you an example of what we spoke about on July 6th, a deep dive into the evaluation process of not only teachers but administrators, how are we doing with evaluation? Are we meeting our timelines? What are our expectations? Are they consistent across the schools from administrators and looking at teacher goals? Are the goals smart, and are they called Smart T goals? Are they smart? Are they measurable? Are they attainable? And really focusing in on some larger professional goal objectives that are consistent among the four schools. And so looking at developing those goals and then really revisiting our timelines on how we evaluate our new teachers. We have a lot of new teachers, and when I say new, new to Winthrop Public Schools, but also young teachers. They require multiple observations, both formal and informal observations, and I think critical to those observations is the feedback that we provide to those staff members after we do a walkthrough or after we do an observation. But more critical is letting the staff, the entire staff, new staff and veteran staff, know what it is that we are actually coming in to look at. What are we expecting to see when it's an observation that you know we're coming or that you don't know that we're coming? Because we're not looking for you to put on a show for us. We're looking for you to continue to teach in the way that you do on a, on a daily basis. Some of the administrative professional goals, we're in the midst of talking about getting back to instructional rounds, which my first and second year here, we did instructional rounds where a group of administrators have a plan about what they're looking for in a classroom, and I believe our focus is going to be on rigor, doing a lot of defining of rigor. I think teachers need to know what rigor looks like. What does it actually look like? So when we come in your classroom, what will we actually be looking for? And then a really more formal process of feedback through the evaluation process. So that's a big focus of our Summer Leadership Academy. So we did some administrative goal setting. That's going to take us the entire summer. We are identifying consistency of practice across the district, identifying a list of district-wide practices that we are, and we've done this before, but it's time to tweak it again, a list of those practices that we would like to see to create consistency across the district. Homework has become one of those topics that principals and teachers have been discussing. What does it look like? We got away from homework during COVID, and I think we need to get back to what it is that we are expecting and, and that that be consistent across grade levels, whether it's 10 minutes of, or 15 minutes of reading and 30 minutes of math, that there is some consistency of practice across the district and that it's communicated clearly, communicated to parents, communicated to teachers, and that it is visible when we're doing, whether it's our instructional rounds or observations, so that there can be some feedback as to whether or not those things are going on. Other things that are important for consistency, school improvement plans, posting site council meetings, our emergency plans, there's new guidance out from the department, so that's one of our topics that we're focusing on, residency, enrollment, fire drills, and staff trainings. That's another focus about the consistency, ensuring that our professional development plan is completed and ready for the teachers, so the teachers know what to expect, and we have a, a really well-managed timeframe during our professional development time with our teachers because we don't have a lot of time. So we don't want to spend a lot of time talking about how things went this weekend and what you do over the vacation, that we get right down to business for each one of those, especially with the illustrative math program that we'll be implementing at the Gorman Fort Banks School in the fall. Teachers have already started some professional development, but there'll need to be more of that, and it has to be timely, and the time has to be spent well. So working on that. And then the opening of the school plan was something we also discussed, determining the schedule for the first two days of school, prior to students arriving, ensuring that we're utilizing that time not to do things that we could otherwise do by email, and make sure that staff has that up and ready. Day two is on the 14th, so I'll be at the, the Mass Association of School Superintendents Conference. I'll be leaving after this meeting, and I'll be down the Cape. It's a great conference. There's over 250 superintendents that participate in that conference, and it's held at Mashpee High School. So we go there from about 7:45 in the morning till 3:45 in the afternoon, and then there's time after that for colleague building, you know, working with other superintendents and just being able to sit and talk about how things are going in other schools. So I'm looking forward to that, and on Thursday night when I return, I will get ready for Friday's Second Leadership Academy Day on Friday, where we'll be following up on items from day one of our conference, and we will also be adding in the review of the bullying and prevention plan that we have. Last time, it was updated in, in terms of updating it more, a lot compared to what it was prior to that, was 2019. You're required to do it every four years. We've made some tweaks to it, but we need to take those tweaks and put them into writing. There is a plan that we have to follow that's put out by the Department of Education, and step one is to review the process we had and make sure it's in line with the state, which it is because we have been updating it. And then the principals will have the opportunity to talk more about that based on their buildings, and if there's anything additional that we want to do with that. We'll be looking at ARCS Ed, which is our mandatory staff training, reviewing that. Now all of the mandatory staff training, such as Understanding 504, filing 51 days, restraint training, all of that, we now have in a portal where teachers access that online, and each one of the activities that they have to do, at the end of the activity, they take a quiz and they sign off on it. So we have a portal that shows that anybody who works here has participated in everything from ethics training to 504 training. ARCS Ed has ramped it up to make it more interactive and not boring, because no one wants to sit there and go through 86 PowerPoints and check off that they read it. So this one is more, now that we have it on the platform, it's more interactive, and it's web-based so that we can keep track in the moment as to somebody who hasn't completed that process, and it's a requirement of employment. So we push that out in August so that teachers can do that on their own, because the amount of time we give them during the first day, two days of school wouldn't be sufficient to finish them all. So they can either do it before they get here, they can have some time at work, if not, the majority of the time they would have to do that is on their own by a specific date assigned by us. Also, two more things to be talked about on Friday, school committee presentations, having principals come in and PPS director and others to be able to provide information to the school committee throughout the school year. Most importantly, the handbooks and the school improvement plans will be the first priority topic so that you can take a look at those handbooks, and the principals can explain what has changed and why, and be able to highlight those before you review them. And we'll also be talking about the police and fire inspections that will be coming in August. The chief will let me know what dates folks are coming. Those by school law need to be done, I believe, every three years. Winthrop Public Schools does them every year, and then both the police chief and the fire chief are not shy to follow up with us about every two weeks until we've ticked off all the items that they feel are necessary for us to address. And we are grateful for that because it definitely is a safety and security item for us, and that is what I have.
Any questions? Hearing none. Appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, these are the absence.
Yes. So no homeschool applications this week and for personnel at this point, no new appointments, resignations. Jenna Laramie, who is a seventh grade teacher here in Winthrop Middle School, is moving on to teach high school in a different subject area. She notated that she loves the town of Winthrop. Unfortunately, there wasn't a position for her to move to the high school, and that's really where her passion is, so she is going to try another district. Kayla Murphy, who is an awesome speech and language pathologist, is leaving us, and she is going into the private sector, so more of a hospital setting and private speech and language service department. So those are our two resignations. We have no retirements and postings. Administrative assistant at the Coming School, so that's the secretary at the Coming School, who is now going to be our primary student information systems, which is great. Arely speaks two languages. She's a huge benefit to the school district, and we believe she's going to be an awesome add to the district to be able to help us with our, you know, SIP compliance and utilization of a new power school platform that will kick off beginning of next school year. There's a lot of learning of SIP compliance that needs to be done with that. She'll still be managing IPASS. She's very savvy with IPASS, so she'll take over and do a fair amount of management of that as we bridge the two systems in the turnover. We also have posted for an additional special ed ESP at the Coming School that was due to a resignation from the prior school committee meeting. No leaves of absence.
Okay. Under new business, we have our town manager, Tony Marino, to discuss solar panels. Would you like to join us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Stop the chaos right before your meeting. Place that water.
There you go.
Oh, did it go out?
Yeah. No, it'll get wet and then die.
Uh-oh.
I didn't say phone.
Oh, from the AC?
Yeah, from the AC.
Yikes.
But we're going to fix that. I just wanted to thank you for having me. I wanted to, I've been talking to, this is the company Select Energy, they're the ones that put the solar panels on the middle school, high school building, and they own that system, and we get credits on our bill every month for the power that we generate there. So they were interested in doing other projects. We're looking at potentially doing something at the Rink and a few other towns, but for this committee, they really are interested in putting solar panels on the two elementary schools. One of the issues we have is, you know, the roofs are 20 years old, so, you know, you don't want to, I'm not sure what the, that life may be 30 years out of it, but you don't want to go sticking 15-year solar panels on a roof that's 20 years old, and that's a problem statewide. So what they approached me with, and this is just a little bit about, page two is a little bit about the company, a couple of samples of projects they've done around the state. The engagement process is the next slide. I've been talking to them in the first step with the project identification, looking at sites, electrical infrastructure, any utility bills. We've sent them all the bills. They've done an analysis, things of that. And then the next step is why I'm here with this board and committee is to, for the letter of intent. So the next page really lays out how this program works. So in the House budget, they allocated $100 million for Green School Works. The state across, has identified schools as one of the reasons that they don't put solar on school buildings is because the towns and the cities don't have money for the roofs. You know, they've got a, like us, they've got a 20- or a 30-year-old roof. They don't have the money to put the roof on, so they opt not to do solar panels because nobody wants the capital expense. So they've identified this money to $100 million that's still going through Conference Committee right now, but in effort to, we've got a project that's sort of steamrolling along here. If we get the letter of intent done, that'll allow them to do a bunch of the legwork leading up to that. And if this money is available in the, for what we expect in the fall of 2023, we'll have what'll be essentially a shovel-ready project, ready to apply for this grant and really give us a leg up on everybody else because we'll be the first in the door to apply, or one of the first in the door to apply for the grant. You know, we've got all the criteria for winning the application, and the nice thing is, is there's no risk. You know, if we don't get the roof money, we don't do the solar package. You know, if we get it, the benefit to us is not only we do, we get to put solar panels on the roofs, but we get brand-new roofs out of it, you know, funded by money from the state. So it seemed like a no-brainer, and, you know, we certainly should put our hat in the ring for it, but of course, I didn't, you own the buildings and they're your responsibility, so I didn't want to put a letter of intent in for your buildings without getting the school committee's permission and asking for it, which is what I'm here tonight for. Just they did a, you know, this is obviously need to be fine-tuned, but if you look in the town of Winthrop Public Schools, they've got what the layout might look like for the Gorman Fort Banks, some breakdowns. This smart block 10 and 11 is, you know, basically when we apply, you know, whether or not we get in, you'll see the biggest difference is the, the incentive amount. I believe the numbers, you know, we get a little bit more of the .742 versus the .708, so we'd save a little bit more money, you know, if we're in block 10 versus block 11. But the, you know, annual avoided carbon CO2 pounds is the same, and everything else is the same. And then there's also some, there's a federally designated low-income census tract that we may or may not be eligible for, they're looking at that, but if we can get into the 40% federal ITC, you know, the numbers go up a little bit and we save a little bit more money. So that's all, that'll all get worked out down the road, but that's the projected savings. It's a 20-year term, you know, so it'd have to be eventually go to this committee, then this, you know, the council for approval, whatnot, but it would, what I'm just looking for is your permission to send the letter of intent so we can move forward with a lot of the design work. They're doing it at their expense. There's no risk for us. I included a paper clipped a sample of what the letter of intent looks like. I've had our town attorney, Jim Sipalata, look at it. He said the, what I thought, you know, there's an easy out for us if they don't get the roof money, you know, we don't move forward with them, so there's really no risk for us to let them move forward with it, so. And certainly feel able to answer any questions, or?
I think, I think one of the questions that, that I would have, and I thank you for this, and we've talked about this, and sort of needing the school committee to be informed before, you know, making a decision, even though this is a sort of a, no, kind of a no-brainer.
Right.
Because you're not locked into anything. My only worry is the RTU units that are on the fort.
Yep.
And getting a new roof, certainly, I'll take two new roofs because we have leaks that we are patching and shoveling rocks over.
Yep.
And that leak into the windows that set the school alarm, fire alarms off, and the like. I would imagine that they're going to, they're going to give us an understanding, because I don't know that we'd get the RTU units replaced prior to, or how that would impact the solar project if they go anywhere near those, or if it would disrupt it.
There may be some nearby, and we, I talked about that with them, because I said we were in the process of trying to find money for it, whether it's through green communities or other funding sources to get those done. The nice thing about the rooftop units, and I have to see them to confirm it, but usually they're up on brackets because they don't want to sit them right on the roof, so they build those brackets in and flash around them.
Yep.
So the roof doesn't leak, and then the rooftop unit mounts under there.
Yep.
And, but, you know, depending upon the new units and the wiring harness, there may be some, but it won't be near the solar panels, so even if we can't get them right away, I think we could probably work with that, but that's something we could confirm.
Yeah, and we can talk to Mikel Filippko, who's our facilities, as well as Richie Sofuni, just to get a sense so that we're not putting new roofs and solar panels on only to know that we have to rip them, rip something out to put the.
Right.
RTUs in.
Well, in my timeout with next year with the capital plan, and we look to, you know, fund the new rooftop units and make it work that way, so, yeah.
I, I have not been on top of the roofs. I don't plan to go on top of the roofs, but I have seen pictures, so.
Yeah.
Those are, you know, we would, we would want to involve Mikel and Richie to, to that degree when they start to talk about it, if in fact it is something that they can move forward with.
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Swope?
Can you explain term savings again for me?
I'm sorry?
Term savings?
Sure. Meaning, which, just, just one of the schools?
The 234 versus the 222 on, on smart block 10 and 11.
Ah, yeah, it's the smart incentive amount rate. You see the .0708 versus the .0742.
Okay, so it would be saving, when you say term savings?
Meaning over the 20, life of the contract, 20 years, we would save $234,000 in electricity. So divide that by, so 23,000 a year.
And what?
Or no, less, sorry, half of that, yeah.
How do they know that?
They're basing off the kilowatt hours. They analyze our electrical bills.
I mean, how do they know what the price of electricity is going to be?
Well, they, they've got escalators built into there, so they figure that it's going to go up X number percentage over so many years. I mean, it's a little bit of a guess, but that's.
And they built that in.
And they built that in, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Littieri?
Just to follow up on that, too, because I look at year one, for example, on that one, year one forecast is saving 6,400. Multiply that times 20, it's like 130,000. So how do they get from 130 to 234?
I can ask him that question, but that's, you know, I mean, that'll be worked out when we get the power purchase agreement. I mean, this is just, this is what they gave me, and I, you know, they couldn't be here tonight to, they, the scheduling wise, it didn't work, so.
Because on the Coming School, same thing, it's like 2,900 the first year, but the term savings is 132, where it should be, you know, 60,000, like.
Right, well, if the cost of electricity goes up, then the savings would, you know, I mean, that all kind of factors in.
Yeah, I know, that's, and, you know, one thing on solar, well, a couple of things on solar, we've had solar for a number of years in the town and on the school, and it's very difficult to get any kind of consensus as to what we're really saving and to what the costs are, because there's still going to be costs built into this, right? Because. Because
Then, no, they finance, no, we agree to the rate and they, they put the package together. It's all on them to install it.
The town solar that we have, we get, we get credits and then we get a bill. Right? That's the way it works. We get an expense bill for the cost of them.
The lease, right, exactly. And then we get the credits back, right?
I don't see the cost here.
The, well, that would be, it'd be similar to what the package is now. I don't think that's in here, but
Right.
But it's similar to what we're doing today.
You know, the no-brainer part seems to be we're getting a new roof.
Correct, yeah, they got a factor of that in.
That's not from them, that's from the grant.
Right.
So they have nothing to do with
Right, exactly.
Building the new roof.
Yep.
So I always get wary because you don't get anything for nothing in this world.
No, no, and, and solar's not, you know, I mean, solar's great, but it's, you know, a lot, some of it is about, you know, doing the right thing for the environment and reducing your foot, your carbon footprint and that kind of stuff and less electricity usage, right? I mean, that's really, it's not all about, some of it's about the savings, but a lot of it's about, you know, we're a green community, we're supposed to be looking to reduce our carbon footprint, so a lot of it's that, which is why they get into the carbon, you know, the CO2, how many tons we're going to be reducing and things like that. So as long as, you know, my big factor was the roof, you know, I mean, not having to spend, you know, a million or $2 million on each roofs to, you know, to get that done. Plus we end up with some solar, which, you know, I'll have them come in and give a presentation on the details if we get there and we actually get the roof money. But again, that all gets worked out. Like even if we get the roof money and we don't like the terms of the PPA, we don't have to do it. You know, that's, the PPA is the power purchase agreement. Like we have to agree to that and we have to agree to the terms and this language in the letter. If we don't agree on that, then this deal's dead. So all of those kind of questions and what it's going to cost long-term will get answered down the road. But, you know, for now, it's just let them go do the legwork to see if we can be ready to hit the door for the roof money, when and if it happens in the fall of 2023.
Something like this where it's on our buildings, like the one we have at the town, we don't necessarily have the panels, we're buying it from a farm or whatever. This, where we're recouping all the energy that's taken out of those solar panels is staying with the schools, uh, with, yeah.
They generate, yeah, and we agree to buy it back at that rate, exactly.
Just one, one more question.
Yep.
When they, I know it's two separate things, so the, the green space grant would cover the cost of the roof. Is there something, I'm assuming there's something in there that says whether or not the warranty on the roof would remain intact once the solar panels get put on it? So I, I would assume somebody would look at that.
They would work, yeah, it's, it's meant to work in tandem, exactly, yeah.
Do you know if this Green School Works grant would cover the cost of buying solar panels outright?
I don't, but the money was designed for roofs. There might be another avenue of money that could be for that, but this is designed to fund these kind of programs. They've been successful in the past, so that's the state likes this program.
I just always get cautious of solar panel rental or leasing.
Right. Well, you're locking, like, and just to go back to, you know, the question that was asked before, is, you know, you look at your solar, your solar PPA rate, your power purchase agreement rate is locked in at that, you know, just for the Fort Banks, it's either .1226 or .1260. You know, your average rate through National Grid right now is .1593, which, you know, like you said, with the escalators, that'll go up. But we're locked in at that .1226. So you're buying that rate, that power from them at that rate with the power that they generate on the roof.
For the duration?
Yes, for the 20 years, yep.
If it goes down, do they adjust it?
No, because that's a discounted rate, like National Grid's not going to go below .1226, you know, so.
I haven't been up on the roofs either.
Yep.
Do you know, these, they look in the pictures, tire and gravel.
Whatever's up there would probably replace something similar, I'm sure.
That's a huge, that's a big thing because tire and gravel is the most expensive.
Right.
A rubber roof, which I think we have in the high school, is rubber because it's fairly newer.
Yep.
It's much cheaper. But, but if they're going to replace with a rubber roof, and my question will be to Lisa on this, have we, because since they put the solar panels on the, on the high school with a rubber roof, there's a risk for leaks because you're going to go up there, check things out, plus the way that they mount them up there and this
Yep.
Could be issues. No, I know because we've done it at my building.
All right.
And we have a rubber roof. And they put the rubber roof on, then they put the solar panels on. We've had issues.
Yep. Have we had any issues at that school?
So we've had some issues. I don't know if they've been directly related to people going up there to check the solar panels, but I can find that out. I'd have to ask, Mikel is the guru on that stuff.
If they were to put a tire and gravel, you wouldn't have those issues. Rub, rub is, is less money because you run the risk of when you go up there, there's foot traffic and
Right.
Other stuff that goes on up there.
Yeah, that's a little more.
Drops a nail or a screw or something on the roof and some steps on.
And we're tire and gravel here.
Yeah. If they do, that's what I'm saying, but tire and gravel is, is, I'm sorry.
Much more expensive, yes.
Much more expensive.
Is it also more durable?
Tire and gravel's the way to go, if you can afford it.
So, oh, sorry, guys. I, I do know we had a quick discussion, me, myself, Lisa and Dylan. I think Dylan said that if you guys were to go this route, there was, they were going to add like a spray or something like that to a rubber roof that had like a 15-year warranty that strengthened it. I don't remember exactly what the wording was, but I remember Dylan mentioning that if we went with the rubber roof, there was, there was going to be a rubber roof and something and an added layer protection of spray over it that comes with a 15-year warranty.
Yeah, I'd sort of like to know
Yep.
If they're going to do tire and gravel or rubber.
Sure. I'll find that out.
And then I'm just, I'm just very happy that the state's going to pay for the roofs because they usually, it would be, they'll put a new roof on and then you get nothing.
Right.
The company would pay for the roof and then they would take the power.
Right.
Because just, I know that, you know, I was bigger, but it was a million and a half bucks a dual roof.
Yeah.
With rubber.
Yeah.
If they're going to do tire and gravel, and these are smaller, I know, but it's going to be, it's going to be in that million-dollar
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I should get a couple million, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm saying for one.
Right.
Two schools, yeah.
Yep.
And just looking at the, you know, you look at the savings even for the Cummings School, let's say, and it's, it says 2,900 the first year. And the electricity bill on the Cummings is 180,000 for the year, right? Budgeted?
Yeah, 160, 160, 180.
What?
160 to 180 approximately.
It's just such a tiny percentage. Now, I don't know if it's the available space they have, I mean, it's
Yeah, it's not a huge system.
You know, the Gorman's 140,000 for electricity and I think it's, what is it, 20,000 or 9,000, 6,000?
They're taking that kind of advantage.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just, you know, we get a new roof, that's the good
That's the only reason I would, yeah.
It's huge.
If this was a straight-up solar project, I probably wouldn't be asked because the savings isn't enough.
Tiny, tiny percentage of the budget.
Yeah. I wouldn't be here, sitting here asking if it wasn't for the fact that they're going to do the new roof. I mean, that's a huge, knowing our capital expenses and everything we got coming down the pike to be able to grant fund the roof replacement, having some extra solar panels up there, I think that's a good trade-off, so.
Great trade-off. And again, I know you were just saying there are some issues at those two schools with the roofs.
Those major issues at the, at the Cummings School, major issues.
20 years is really like the last.
Major issues at the Cummings School.
Exactly, so it's time, like they, they're coming down the pike anyway. And it don't guarantee we're going to get this grant, but at least let's, this puts us in position to apply for it and, you know, will put us in a better position to be ready to hit the ground running when they open up the grant application process.
With the stoppage of leaks with the new roof, because a leak doesn't just end at the leak.
A lot of penetration, yeah, a lot of penetration's the biggest problem.
You know, the mold is the biggest issue.
Exactly.
You know, that we consistently check for, but I don't want to check for it and find it, you know, so I think it, I think it makes sense.
So question on this company, I know that you've worked with them and so you know who they are.
They've been, yeah, the, the town of Winthrop's worked with them, yes.
Are there any other, were any other options considered or?
They're all, there's only two or three out there and they're all offering the same kind of package, you know what I mean? So we already had a relationship with them. I mean, we can certainly shop it, but I mean, I'm, they're not going to get, I've shopped the prices and they're all right in that range, so you're not going to do much more on the PPA agreement. I've got a little experience with this because we did, when I, my prior town, we negotiated power purchase agreements for windmills and solar. So I mean, this is, it's pretty good pricing, like, some of them are even higher than this for, you know, if you go for a windmill or things like that because they got the cost of the windmill and you're buying the price back. Some of it's even a little higher than what National Grid gets, but, you know, people feel better because they're buying power from windmills. So this is actually a pretty good rate because it's actually lower than the National Grid rate right now.
Okay.
So.
And there's no engineering cost, there's no cost to the town?
Not in that, they're going to assume all the engineering costs. They're going to go in and look at the structural members, make sure they can handle it and, yeah, look at all that. So say it seemed like, you know, at least go this step. We can still say no at the end, but at least let's, you know, get the letter of intent out there and put it, you know, keep ourselves in the running for it anyway.
Do we need a motion on this, I believe?
Yeah, just a moment, yeah.
So on that, on that, is, you said that this would be negated if the, if the grant doesn't come through, but would there be any other out clause if we decided that for whatever reason we didn't want to proceed?
Yeah, there's the power purchase agreement if we don't come to, you know, if we don't like the terms, like we say, oh, we don't like your point, you know, 2220 or whatever, and we can't come to terms on that, then we're out. They don't want to do business with it if we're not happy with the agreement, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's more than, yeah.
Is the green grant contingent upon an agreement to put the solar panels on?
The, yeah, yeah, we won't get the roofs, yeah, yeah.
It's all tied together.
You can walk away from the whole thing, but
Right.
The state, if the state gives us the money and then we choose not to do it, yeah, then there's no more money for the roofs, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes.
That we accept a, a letter of intent that you, you signed.
You want me to send you a letter of intent, yep.
Send a letter of intent.
Second, motion made by Ms. Wob, second by Ms. Petry. Any discussion?
Just that, just so you know, the company that we dealt with, Select, and I think we dealt with them with the high school too, so.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Wob?
Yes.
Ms. Montucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Wob?
Yes.
Ms. Wob?